Having called the meeting to order, I want to turn it over at this point in time to South Carolina Revenue and Fiscal Affairs Department to discuss the 2020 redistricting benchmark report, which we should have all gotten a copy of at some point in time. And with that, I will call the workshop to order.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. My name is Frank Rainwater. I am the executive director of the American Fiscal Affairs Office. I have Ms. Catherine Kelly from our office assisting me remotely for this meeting. Thank you for the opportunity to work with you on your redistricting plans. I'll be happy to take questions during or after, Mr. Mayor, whatever, however, for you best. We're going to cover a little bit to help you and help your constituents to understand what redistricting is. I'm going to highlight three basic principles in your latest population so you can kind of see what some of the challenges are. And then at the end, we'll talk about the next step. You have some options on how you can proceed to go forward. At the outset, I would like just to advise you that it looks like if you're redistricting, it's one of the more complicated ones. It's going to be difficult. And I will point out the reasons why, and we have a three, but it's going to require a lot of consideration by council, because you have a lot of decisions to make. What I will emphasize is that we are very good with numbers and maps and can draw figures, but there's a lot of multiple interests you have to consider, and we need that input from your constituents before we move forward on the map. But with that being said, Mr. Mayor, let me just kind of highlight the presentation. If you can pull that up. We're going to kind of highlight the page here. I will start here on page two of six, if you have a hard copy. So in redistricting, there are three basic principles that follow redistricting. And what I'm going to outline for you tonight is the requirement of what exactly one person, one vote means. It's part of the equal protection clause of the Fourteenth Amendment and is the primary driver on what redistricting is about, one person, one vote. We're also going to talk about the Voting Rights Act in primarily Section Two, which is designed to protect the interest of the racial minority population in your city. And then there's another set of factors we're going to talk about called traditional redistricting principles. And those are a host of other factors that the courts have recognized are part of the redistricting process that governments need to consider to help improve that. I'm going to highlight those for you. In the end, or as the start of this program, but at the end, you're going to have to balance all these factors. There are some hard guidelines that you have to meet, but then you have some discretionary items. And it's how you balance the requirements with discretionary items, what's important for you as the city of Greer. Again, in Columbia, we can sit here, we can look at the maps, we can draw maps different ways, but my goal is our goal here is to make sure you embrace and make sure that you understand exactly what these maps are about, how to get there, what the criteria are, and come up with a solution that works best for the city of Greer. So that being said, unless there's any questions at this point, we'll go to the next page and talk about one person, one vote. So what we see here is your total population according to the 2020 census, broken out by your council district. You have six council districts. On the right there is a graphical representation of the amount of population you have in each district. The red line represents the ideal. So what one person, one vote means on the Fourteenth Amendment is you want to equalize the population. You're trying to effect equalize the voices. So one person's vote for one person's vote in one council district weighs just as much as another person's vote in another district. And with the changes in population, with uneven growth, with annexations in areas, these council districts get out of whack over time. So you have a responsibility on a regular basis to sense that they can keep triggering that to redistrict. I think those people understand what one person, one vote, but the simplest example is, let's say you only had two districts. And one district had 100 people, and 100 people had, excuse me, one district had 100 people, and the second district had 200 people. Well, you can see easily that that district with 200 people, there's twice as many voices to be heard, twice as many people responsible for letting one person as opposed to District One. And so those voices in District One weigh twice as much as District Two, because it's only one out of 100 people being heard as opposed to District Two to be one out of 200. So under one person, one vote, the ideal thing would be to look at those populations so you have 150 people in each district. Very simple math, math kind of thing. It gets a little more complicated simply because the numbers are different. So we have outlined for you here, the current population is increased significantly in Greer, you're a growing area. And the average or the ideal population, or the target population you'd have in each district after the census has come out is 5,885 people. That's the perfect match for each district. But what we show you here on the graph on the right is that some districts are well below that, and some districts are well above. So you see District One is a little bit below, District Two is significantly below that ideal of 5,885. District Three on the other side is significantly over. So with those red bars there, you see those are the three districts that are overpopulation. And what this process is going to involve is taking an excess population and moving that into Districts One, Two, and Six. To be more specific, is the table on the right, again, we've outlined for you the statistics here. And there's a requirement or a concept called deviation when congressional districts are redrawn. They have to be drawn within one person difference in each district, and it's almost a zero deviation around each congressional district. But local governments have a little bit of flexibility. There's something called the 10% rule. And what the 10% rule represents, you have to be below 10% total deviation. When I say total deviation, that is the range between your highest percentage over and your lowest percentage over. And those statistics are represented in that table on the left. People, one, if you look at the deviation percentage. District One is under the ideal count by 180 people. That's a negative 3% or 3% under. District Two is your smallest district. They are 1,602 people below the ideal. That's a deviation from the ideal of minus 47%. District Three, as we noted earlier, is your largest district. They are 1,317 people above. That is 22.39% above the ideal. So when we look at that range between your minus 27 and your plus 22, that's a range of 49.6%. That's where you have to get to that 10%. So you want the range there between your highest and your lowest to be less than 10%. So you don't have to be perfect. You don't have to get every district to exactly 5,885, but you definitely need to go in a certain range. We recommend you try to get something closer to 5%. But that is a recommendation. As long as you're under 10%, you're basically within a guideline. However, you can be challenged on that. If you draw something at 9.9%, you get challenged, and somebody has a plan that says you can accomplish the same factors with a lower deviation, the court could strongly consider that. Again, there's a lot of other factors in that. So out of some caution and out of some reasoning, because these numbers aren't exact, to help achieve whatever goal you're trying to achieve on, equalizing the voices so to speak, we recommend trying to go lower something about 5%. But that is one of the decisions you get to make. We have some cities that have gone a little below that, and we have some cities that stayed around 9%. And it's just a decision you have to make, and it's one I want you to be comfortable with whichever way you go on that. But you have a challenge there because you have such a significant change there. You have one district that is well under, one district that's well over, and we're talking about more. That's your challenge there. You're trying to get each one of your districts to 5,885. So if we go to the next page briefly, one of the concepts, this is a map of their current city, and we already have your incumbents listed, and we take that into account because it's not our attempt to redistrict, put two incumbents together. If you direct us to do so, if there's a reason to do so, please let us know. We try to respect currently incumbents in their district. But what you see by this, this is not like a county where you've got a large band always touching each other. One of the concepts I'm going to talk about later is a contiguousness. In each part of one district, of a district has to touch every other part of that district. Now, you can see you've got a lot of annexations, but there are thin areas that make them touch. So you don't have a lot of the city bars touching each other. So to move, to move population around, you don't have to work within those existing lines. In some parts, it's not going to be, it's just impossible to move to other districts without that contiguousness. So that's just an example, just to kind of show how it looks there to make your district a redistricting a little bit more challenging. So let's talk next a little bit about page five of six. And what I want to focus on now is the Voting Rights Act. So under what I talked about earlier, one person, one vote, the Fourteenth Amendment, the courts have said you cannot use race as a predominant factor in redistricting. That is called racial gerrymandering, and that is considered unconstitutional. Yet, on the other hand, we have to respect the Voting Rights Act and take that into account. And the Voting Rights Act does take race into account, and it says you have to look at the voting interest of the racial minority population. And there are some guidelines within that. So immediately you're faced with a balancing test. You've got to balance the population. You can't use race as a predominant factor, but you can use it as a factor here when you're looking at the Voting Rights Act. And so we'll put this table with you. We have your total population at the top, and then we have your voting age population. And we look at both of these criteria when we're talking about the Voting Rights Act. Just to help you make sure that everybody understands the chart there. You see the total population. You have the percent of Hispanics in that population, percent of Hispanics. MH means non-Hispanic white, and then the percent of non-Hispanic white population. MH, DOJ means non-Hispanic, Department of Justice definition of black population, and then the percent of that population is of the total, and then you have the races. What we see here immediately is that you have one district, District Two is a minority influence district. Is it 47% over, almost 48%? The total population, 47%. And its voting age population is 47%, just over 47%. So that's an area of concern in that you have a minority influence district. What's going to be challenging here, though, is that District Two is the district that you're under by the most. District Two is under by 1,600, excuse me, oh yeah, it's under by 1,600, 1,600 people. So you're going to have to move a significant chunk of people into District Two, into District Two. And looking at some of your demographics, you've already got the bulk of the concentration of the minority population in District Two. So how can you change that? Obviously, how does that get affected when you start drawing the lines? And are there, are joining minority districts there, or blocks, I should say, census blocks to help maintain that? It's just a challenge we're going to have to go through. Can you hold there, Jeffrey? But as we noticed, Districts Three, Four, and Five are the ones that you have to move people out to go into One, Four, and Six. So maintaining or trying to protect the interest of the racial minority there, but it's very concerning to serve. So you've got a balancing test on trying to, try to watch out for that. But sometimes the numbers are what the numbers are. We haven't done a lot of work to see what those census blocks are. You have, the way this will be accomplished, you have 934 census blocks, and that is the lowest denominator we can use. And so we're going to have to go block by the block, look at racial makeup, look at the total population, look at the contiguousness in the other districts to move through that. And that's going to be a challenge going forward as we work through this. But I just want to highlight that, too. You guys making decisions today are making you aware of a significant challenge that you're going to have. Several years ago, the Voting Rights Act was under something called Pre-Preparative. That when you adopted your plan, you had to submit, South Carolina is one of the states that the subject, Section Five of the Voting Rights Act. And we had to submit any, any change in our election procedures, including redistricting, had to be submitted to the Department of Justice for pre-clearance. That is no longer a requirement now. And the standard that the Department of Justice used is no longer the standard. There's a separate analysis. It's called the Jingle's Test, and we have to look at the concentration of the minority. We have to look at the voting patterns of the minority. And I suppose the voting pattern is of the majority to see if there's racially polarized voting and going through that. And that's something we have to look at and consider as we go through that. As I mentioned, with the, to read more cases, that Pre-Preparative is no longer required. So when you adopt your plan, you're responsible for your plan. It doesn't have to be approved by anybody in Columbia. It doesn't get approved by this office. It doesn't get approved by the General Assembly. You are totally responsible. So that's one of the instances I want to make, whether it's us helping you or any other person helping you on redistricting, ultimately, you are the ones responsible. And we think it's very important for the all of us to get all the details and be actively involved in how these plans get together. Should you get challenged, you know, you have to defend this, we're going to try to provide you the guidelines and the benchmarks and show what the issues are. But we want this to be very much a climate decision of your council and citizens included. We can, we can outline some more of that. So let me flip to the next page then, just to highlight the second part. The other part I want to talk about here is what I think the traditional redistricting principles are, and those are, I'm going to kind of go out of order for sequence here. But as I mentioned earlier, one of the requirements are, is that the vote, that they draw a contiguous, that each part of a district reward is connected to each other. That's a requirement, and we will make sure that happens. We also try to minimize within other precincts. Ultimately, you want this, as simple as possible, you want it easier on the registration office so people know where they live. But sometimes, just because of the shape of your city, because of the way voting precincts are, because of the way the census blocks are, it's not, it's not entirely possible to keep from splitting the voting precinct. I don't know how many are currently impacted, but with the changes on their plan, we'll sort of advise you what that change is. We try to keep them to a minimal, but that's not always possible. Another factor here is traditional redistricting principle is compactness. That is really more of an intent, but there are statistical measures. You want to try to keep districts geographically compact and it's still practical. But again, you're looking at the map, you've got some, some different shapes there, and so that's, you can't help but not being compact in some areas, but you try to do that, that's one of the principles. The most important thing is that last point there, districts reward, districts reward need to be drawn with respect to existing districts and communities of interest. It's certainly acceptable, as far as the redistricting process, for you to identify one of your core districts and one of the communities of interest. I forgot the district number, but that one district that has to give up so many people, one of the decisions you have to make is, what is, what is that core district? Again, drawing in Columbia, we can look at that, and we can, we can get a visual of where to draw the line. But it's important to respect communities of interest. I have no idea, just looking at this map, what's a community of interest in each one of your districts. So that's something that we need input on, or something you have to consider when you're adding, you try to, you try to move light things together, you try not to split a community of interest. You know, that may be a well-established neighborhood, it may be a work area, it could be a school zone, it could be a downtown unit or something like that. Again, that's something you have to decide, what are those key bars that need to be kept together? Obviously, some of your districts, some of your districts are going to be split. If you want to move people, lines have to be drawn somewhere, and somebody on the other side of the street is going to be on a different, in a different council than somebody else, at least in some of the areas. But that's what we need input from you on that. So the most important thing is that first item under our recommendation is to conduct a public meeting. You know, we are thankful, and we applaud you for starting this as a public meeting to help educate even the public. But it's very important to solicit feedback from the public. If they're thoughtful, you are a public representative, and I'm sure you get a lot of feedback. But it's very important to make sure that your public is engaged, they have an opportunity. Some of them may have an interest, and they may have a different idea of what's community of interest. Some of them may draw a different map and share that. But ultimately, you're the ones that have to take all these factors into consideration and come up with a balanced approach. And so, you know, we're going to work with you to look at minority districts and some of those other districts. So Mr. Mayor and members of council, you have a couple of options from here. We have worked with 39 counties and almost 30 cities in different forms or fashion. Some, some have asked us to do the whole nine yards. We present this to you, we get feedback, we can, we can get feedback, we can amend the map and send it to you. Some prefer for us, at this point, just to turn the data over to your, your department. If you have a PIS staff that's familiar with the data and the software, we can work to draw your own districts, and we can communicate with them about some of these legal issues on that. If you work for, work with us, I ask that, we have one person is a primary contact. We just don't have the time or resources to invite every council person in here and give them the feedback. And partially, I struggle with the one balancing, and I think the council needs to work together to come up with a plan that fits, that fits everybody, and you understand your city much better than I do. So going forward, we're happy to, you know, turn it over to you if you'd like for us to make an initial draft. We are welcome to do that, but we would like some input first, whether it's today or later, on what are the areas, what part of the districts need to be kind of kept together, or what parts should be combined so to speak. Again, you have the benefits of the numbers, and so it's a good give and take. We can talk about the numbers with you, and we can, we can look at your, your issues and see how close you get. This is, does require two readings. I'm glad you're having a workshop here, because it's a little less formal, and you can be a little more open about questions without taking any formal actions. But you do need to get this done in time, well, not well, but forward, but significantly before your thought opens on your next election. I believe that's not until 2023, if I understand correctly. So you have plenty of time, but you need to get this done in time for voters to understand if anybody wants to run or where your new districts are, to give your vote registration office time to update their files, to accommodate this. So, Mr. Mayor, members, that's a review of this process. I'll be happy to ask any questions you may have at this time.
Thank you, sir, and thank you, Ms. Kelly, for, for joining us as well this evening. Mr. Rainwater, we do have a number of members of the community that have turned out tonight, and so in the spirit of a workshop, there may be questions that are going to come. Let me apologize to you, we are on a Zoom meeting, so we weren't able to share the screen with everybody this evening, and hopefully you've been able to, to hear the video and the comments that were made. And we did have some copies of the presentation. We can, we can make that available in some form or fashion, whether it's on our website or, or in a hard copy, one or the other, as we move forward. For us tonight, and you as participants in the workshop, the important thing for us to remember tonight is that we are not drawing the map tonight. Tonight is about, and you've heard Mr. Rainwater say it a number of times, this is a numbers game right now. And we are simply looking at the numbers, because that is going to determine what will shape our districts in the future, as, as well as a host of other factors that you heard determined tonight. It's always difficult. Part of this council has, has been through two. I have been through two. It's always difficult to, to do that, and particularly in light as fast as our community is growing and changing, for us to, to make all of the changes work out to everyone's liking. Inevitably, some changes are going to be substantial, some are not going to be so substantial. But I think one of the things that we've got to understand is that we have valid reason to believe that just based on the number of folks that have been identified in our census that that could possibly be short, as well as 3,000, maybe even 3,500, depending on when the vote actually stopped, or when the count actually stopped, and the growth that we've had. When you're building 1,300 to 1,500 new homes a year, things change very quickly. We also know that one of our districts in particular is going to grow at a much faster rate than some of the others. With nearly 4,000 lots already platted, we know that there is going to be substantial growth in a couple of our districts. And while we won't be able to incorporate all that into our redraw as this unfolds some, we do need to remember that we have to keep in mind that our, our community is changing at a rate that is, is going to be substantial over the next 10 years, and we want to try and get this as, as close to right as, as we possibly can. So with that being said, I'm going to open, open the floor. What I would like to do is give council an opportunity to, to ask Mr. Rainwater questions, and we will, we will do that in whatever time we have left over. If you would like to ask a question, I'm going to ask it as you would. Please come to the podium. That way, we can have a record of, of your comments. I'd like to ask, if you would, to give your name and address, just as a matter of the record. We can entertain a, a question if you want to make comment. That's fine this evening as well, too. We will be having additional workshops as we move forward on this, so you'll have, you'll have opportunity to, to give feedback to council as we move forward on the redistricting process. So with that, Mr. Rainwater, I think I'm going to open it up to our council and see what questions or, or comments might be directed your way, and then we will see what we have from the community.
Mr. Rainwater, I don't know that you can see me on the screen, I'm here. Hey, this is a technical question. The GIS system that you referred to, or, or the GIS program, is that, does the user, like our department or GIS folks, when a change is made, does that immediately show the changes to the, that particular district and with all of the statistics that go along with it?
I mean, it can be set up that way. I don't know a GIS expert or something that requires a, a little program there to actually add it up for you, but the GIS, the census block has the data in there, and you can kind of see where, you know, how many blocks, how many people, you get an idea before you move it. Yes, that should be something that you can do. It may not be instantaneously, but it should, it's something that you can do very soon.
Okay. All right, Mr. Rainwater, I got three questions. First, I want to thank everybody that's in the audience today. I see a lot of familiar faces. And I'm District Two Council Representative, so this is going to definitely be of interest for me. But the first question I have is, you mentioned something about 934 census blocks. Is that total wide city? At the time, you were speaking of District Two, but I, I need to catch.
Yeah, yes, 934 census blocks in the public city.
Okay. Second question, you mentioned something about the Uh, second question, um, you mentioned something about the Jingles test, could you elaborate on that a little further?
So, under Section Two of, uh, the Voting Rights Act, under the court decision, they, they, they determine this three-part test to determine when you have to draw a minority district. And the first steps, and the first item is, when there, when the, when there's a large compactness, you look at the compactness of minority area. Put it this way, if we lived in a perfect world, um, and, and if, if the total city population was, let's say, twenty-five, I think it was twenty percent, I forgot here, twenty percent, let's say twenty percent. If every citizen's house was a minority house, there was no way you could draw a single district because it just wouldn't be that way. So you have to look at the compactness, where the minority population is. We have a map in there, I didn't show it, but in the map, we have a map that shows you where the concentration of the minority areas are. You've got a couple of blocks in your area where there's a strong concentration, but it looks like minority population is spread pretty much throughout all the city. The second part of that is, you have to consider whether or not the minorities vote as a block, and in the African-American community, they tend to vote as a block. Uh, other racial groups, um, Hispanic group, they don't always vote as a block, some more conservative, some more, so you have to look at that. And then the third thing we have to look for is, um, does the, uh, majority population tend to vote as a block against the minority, uh, population? Uh, minorities, um, have to be given the opportunity to elect a candidate of their choice, and to meet that, you've got to look at these three criteria. Um, you know, we're trying to look, because you've got forty-seven percent in that area, but you're going to have to down a lot of others. This map, are there minority areas around there, uh, kind of help keep you at that percentage? Does it make sufficient? I mean, we wouldn't draw this, it would be improper, uh, to draw, to draw your district as a, let's say, as a snake going through the whole city trying to pick up all minority areas. But you can look at those concentrations, how close can we keep to that forty-seven percent? Um, it's just something that has to be looked at. But you have to look at those three tests, kind of fault, uh, we try to respect that upfront, uh, but again, if you've got such a significant change here with your differences and where your population is, um, I just, uh, looking at the back will be a challenge. We get in there, you know, see how, how accurate that is.
Okay, and, and last question, kind of segue, you hit on the heat maps. We didn't really hit those too much. Um, is there anything in particular important to, from the heat maps that you might want to, want to note? When I looked at, um, um, I, I saw a few areas of interest that was, uh, pretty significant. Was there anything that you saw that you might want to note?
I haven't looked at it that much in detail. Again, I, I think that's part of it, you need to tell us what's important for your district. Um, and I should have said this early on, the courts have, the courts have, uh, found much more favorable for plans when they get challenged. If you state your objectives upfront, what your criteria are, what your goals are, that's more, more likely, your like, your plans more likely stand up. They don't like it after you get challenged, you put something on the record that wasn't discussed. And from your perspective, what you're doing now, I think you're putting that out there is important to try to, to maintain these areas, you know, we've got some challenges, but I think your point goes exactly to that, you start looking at the heat map, where are those areas? Uh, that gets into communities of interest, and so it's all these factors you put together that we need you to identify, um, how, how to achieve that.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, we have a lot of, uh, areas that have a lot of particular history that I'd like to keep together, so, um, thank you for your time.
Yeah, we, I've heard about some of the other cities, you know, if there's no established neighborhoods, they've always been together, please don't do that. Um, we've had one city that tells us this is a, um, an economically poor area, please keep that together. So, that, that's part of the information we need, uh, if we're going to probably make, you know, we love to have as much upfront on that for you.
Others?
Yeah, Mr. Rainwater, I don't really have any specifics, but I, I, I do notice that, um, the, the three giving districts, three, five, and four, um, District Three is adjacent to all three of the taking districts, one, two, and six. Uh, District Five is adjacent to one, two, and six, and District Four, even though it's, uh, it's not as adjacent, uh, it is adjacent to two, and it could be maneuvered if you had to give and take from three and five. So I know it's a daunting thing, but I think there's a lot of potential there because of that.
Yeah, and I, I mean, you have the college on my map, I mean, you know your students much better than I do. Um, the college is a little bit of a challenge for me.
Right.
But, but that's something as we go through, um, if you give the GIS system, I'll ask this a lot more, a lot better, uh, as that will work through. Again, it's that type of input, um, and this is probably something that takes several iterations, um, you know, when you provide comments, again, it's balancing the comments with the numbers, see how close you get. Y'all have to provide some feedback and say, let's start quite right, let's, let's do this. So, um, and so I'm glad you're starting early, I don't think it'll take a few years to do this, but, uh, I'm glad you've got time to work on it.
Thanks. Anything else?
Mr. Rainwater, I don't, I, I have no forethought that our, our council is ready to consider this, but there are other means, I guess, of, uh, other than the single-member districts. I know there are, there are districts and then at-large members, there's, there's different ways of, of dividing the city. You know, what are the options in regards to how we would proceed down that road if we wanted to at some point in time in the future?
I, I'm not, but generally, um, the local governments want to change, uh, their, uh, format, it usually requires a referendum. Um, you'd have to go to the voters to say, we want to change from whatever to, uh, from a mayor of six seats to, uh, you know, four seats and two at-large, or, or however you want to, but usually requires a referendum, like you go up to the voters, uh, do that.
The other, the other, I guess, comment that I've gotten, it's not really a question, is, and you heard me mention it, is the, the issue that we already feel like we have changed fairly significant in the last eighteen months, um, and anticipate in the next twenty-four to thirty-six that we've got at least one district, maybe two, that are going to change fairly rapidly as well, too. I know we can't account for future growth, but how do we, how do we balance that, or is there any way of attempting to balance that in some regard?
It, it's very difficult, um, I, I know, um, this is just my personal opinion, um, because you, you, you have an idea what's happening in the next two, twenty-four months, you don't know what's happening in the next eighty-four or ninety-six months. Um, this affects your decision you're going to have now, affect, it's going to be for the next ten years for the census. I'm more of the believer, it's better just to work with the cards you've been dealt and work with that. However, that's just my opinion. You may, you may make the decision that, yeah, it's better to have, uh, because the area's going to be growing, you may want to have that, maybe it's a little bit negative deviation this time because it's going to catch up. So, I mean, you have some options there, I just look crazy with it, um, uh, because you don't know what the other, uh, factors, uh, you have obviously, something coming up now, but you don't know what the four or five years down the road is going to be. And so, um, I know you're trying to put some foresight to this, but you, but none of us have a personal policy saying exactly how it's going to work out. So, it's a factor to be considered. I think if you make a decision about that upfront, and what's important, it's much more offensive if you do it upfront and state that there's a reason, uh, you may have over deviations because you know there's going to be a hundred new homes there or other new things, so.
All right, thank you, sir. Anything else, council? We've got about ten minutes left in the workshop. If, um, we have questions, uh, for Mr. Rainwater, uh, if you'd like to, you can come to the podium and, uh, if, uh, I believe he'll be able to hear you, he may not be able to see you, but he'd, he'd be able to hear you if you'd like to come. Uh, for Mr. Rainwater.
I guess, I have a question, but I don't know if he may have been asked, uh, I'm down in Bruton, I have a church in Greer, and, uh, I guess my question, I don't know if he'd be able to answer, but I would ask, is, I guess, number one, what is the timeline for redistricting the map? Uh, I don't know if he, he can answer that, I think that's for the, for the council, for you, Mayor. And, uh, I get, I heard him say, talk about one of the districts, uh, that was the larger district, and I guess the question is, which district is growing the fastest? And is that because those are the districts where new homes are targeted? And then my third question is, District Two is predominantly minority, I heard, and, um, I would imagine that minority constituency, uh, in Greer is a smaller voting number. So how will redistrict, redistricting, uh, affect the African-American communities in
Um, I mean, I've got a lot of questions, but those are three, didn't I? Okay, and I, I think we can, I only wrote down two, and I know you said your third, and I, I may have missed one. I know that, uh, Mr. Rainwater mentioned timeline, you want to offer your timeline again, we have to be done before our next general election, is that correct, sir?
It needs to be done before filing opens, you should, I do think, a little bit in advance, and that's a big way of how we consider this, yes, sir.
Okay, yeah, so.
So, just a, just a quick note on, on our timeline, did you have several, uh, other cities that we're working on for twenty twenty-two? So, we likely will do a draft in the June-July timeframe and work with them.
Okay, so hopefully, we will be considering maps at that, in that timeframe, and then have something by, um, by fall possibly, in terms of a, a map?
Yeah, it just depends on the amount of feedback that we get and, and how clear it is. Our GIS folks are pretty good at, at turning around stuff pretty quickly.
Okay. Um, and I know there was a, a, a question in regards to the redistricting and the, in the minority communities. I think there is, um, obviously a, a number of questions there. The intent is to make sure that there is, is, is equal number of representation in the various districts regardless of their makeup. And we are sensitive to the fact that, uh, we have in the past had, uh, had two minority districts that went to one, and now we are at the point that we'll, uh, try our best to keep that district, but as you can see, uh, we have several districts that are growing very rapidly and, including, uh, District Four, which is, uh, which has got a, uh, or Three, excuse me, um, a significant variation, and, uh, we're going to have to, uh, to figure that out. That district does include, uh, currently includes, uh, a large portion of the area south of eighty-five, where we are going to see substantial growth in that area down there. So there's probably going to be some significant changes to that district.
Is that where most of the, uh, new developments were taking place in that district, or?
Where a large portion of it is, yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Investment in that area overall?
It, it, it represents the largest probably land mass that we have, while we are seeing strong interest in infill development. We are finding that new development is, is pushing further to the, to the south and the east of, of the eighty-five area, and that's mostly just a land issue more than anything else at this point. Yes, ma'am.
Or is the city annexing a lot of, of developments into the city?
We, we do annex on a very regular basis, yes, ma'am. But we do that at the request of the people that want to come in. We have a unblemished record of not annexing anybody into the city that didn't want to come in to in twenty years, so I can, I can stand on that, so. Ma'am, your, your question about annexing subdivisions, was that after, are you referring to after they're developed or prior, or before they're developed?
Some of it is after and some of it is before.
I, I don't know that we've annexed, that in, in, in a very long time, a subdivision that's been developed.
So, so if you will, just one second, let's hold that thought. Anything else for Mr. Rainwater while we've got him? We've got, we've got him on overtime this night, and I don't want to hold him or Ms. Kelly up this evening, and so we, I think we will be seeing and hearing more from them, not necessarily personally, but we'll be seeing more from them as we develop the maps, which is, as you heard, going to be an ongoing process. Anything else tonight for Mr. Rainwater?
One last question. Uh, when we talk about minorities, um, are we considering like, uh, African-American by itself from Hispanic population, you know, how are we?
Yeah, the Department of Justice definition of, of black is black, you know, black-white mix. Uh, Hispanics, eh, uh, and, um, and Asians are different groups.
So it's just not the minority groups, it's specifically, specifically black?
That's right, in some areas, we don't have any, but, but in, in some areas of the country nationally, the Hispanic group is going to be the largest minority group, and you have to look out in those cases for the Hispanic group, um, but in looking at the numbers here, um, African-American is, is the largest group there, uh, to, to watch out for.
I, I had one question, and, and I probably misunderstood, was there something said about two council or two districts sharing in some respect, like a district or area compromising, bringing together or something? I, I can't remember.
I, I, I said in the presentation that we had your addresses, and we did our best not to put two members in the same district when we, when we, when we go there, which I respect each, each member, um, so we don't arbitrarily unnecessarily combine two of you in one district and then there's an open district, so that, unless you direct us to do that, uh, we're going to avoid doing that.
Well, it was something about, it has to be approved or something like that, too.
Change that we make with taking the, taking the changes that the council. Mr. Rainwater, we thank you for your time this evening and, uh, appreciate the offer to, to join us this evening, and, uh, we'll look forward to working with you and your staff on, uh...
Looking forward to it, just let us, uh, looking forward to working with you, just let us, uh...
Okay, thank you, sir. All right, with, with that, let's, let's follow back up on, on your questions. Uh, we, we annex at the request of the developer or a property owner, and so, to Mr. Airwood's point and I, and, uh, Mr. Mayorman wants to follow as well, I believe, uh, we typically, and to my knowledge, have not annexed anyone against their will. Uh, so if a, if a developer or, or a property owner wants to come inside the city, then they make a request for annexation.
So you said the developer can come in and he can buy a large lot, and he's going to build a certain number of houses there? So he can make the request for that area to be annexed into the city before he actually builds a house and people start living there?
Correct. Yes, ma'am. And to be clear, it's, under our ordinance, it has to be the property owner, not the developer. So if it's a private property owner, that is, is formally making the request. Now typically, you're right, it's on behalf of a developer who wants to develop the property, the property owner's going to sell that property to the developer, but the property owner has to make the annexation request. So if you own a hundred acres and I wanted to buy the property from you and develop it, you're the one that's making the request for annexation, not the developer, unless the developer owns it outright. Does that make sense?
It makes sense, but it's a good contractor, what he just said. He just said that if, uh, if a contractor buys this land and he's going to develop this land, and he's going to build a certain number of houses there, he can make the request to have that, that be annexed into the city.
I miss that. It's, it's, the owner of the property has to request that.
I got, I got one other question. I already said that there is a lot of challenges for Greer in the redistricting and the mapping. What specifically do you see as the challenges that would occur with trying to redistrict? Are adding some together, bringing together, or separating, separate districts?
I, I think the main challenge that, that we're going to face is the deviation issue. We're at a fifty percent, right at a fifty percent deviation right now, and that number has to be under ten, so there's going to have to be a lot of give and take in terms of... So there's going to have to be a lot of give and take in terms of the size of the districts and the shape of the districts. And if you heard in the presentation, while it's number-driven, there are also at least half a dozen other considerations that have to be taken into account when you start doing it. So it's not simply just a numbers game. There are other factors that have to go into that formula.
With those challenges, do you see any scenario where there may not be any redistricting?
No, none, because we've got to equalize the number of people in each district.
And on that subject, Mr. Mayor, that bizarre District Three being overpopulated is going to probably turn out to be a plus in redistricting because it touches so much of the city. It will probably be able to shed voters wherever needed.
So while there may be challenges, there may be things that are going to be good about some of the size and the shape. I mean, the reason that district is the size and the shape that it is, that it was underrepresented last time. So we had to draw a much larger district to get the number of people that we needed in it. And that's what's going to happen with those three districts that you see are under the number right now.
I thought I heard the same number, that District Two was under.
They're about 1,600 people short to get to that deviation number. So they would have, that District Two would have to grow.
Right, so that district would have to grow organically or would it have to be artificially grown?
It will take from other districts.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what it would be artificially, take from other districts.
Before the map can be approved, it'll have to have the same number of people as the other districts. Yes, ma'am.
One other question. Over that Victor, when they're doing all the apartments, what district is that?
That's three. Right now, that's three.
Right now, that's three.
That's three.
Yes, ma'am.
And all the apartments that they built up on Bunkham and Century, what district is that?
Bunkham and Century, that's J's, yeah.
That's District One. But now, were you referring, the apartments that?
Lively Victor.
That's District One.
Is that one?
District Two's across the street. Right.
Okay, well, there you go, District One. Okay.
To your point earlier, that gives you some idea how challenging this can become because there are districts where one side of the street is in one district and the other side of the street is in another district. And then you have to add in the fact that you've got school districts and other things that you've got to consider. So sometimes you've got, you know, you've got areas where you've got one side of the street going to a school and another going to another district. So there's a lot of things to consider when we start working on this. Anything else this evening before we draw it to a close?
Mr. Mayor, just by way of reminder to everybody in the room that this is a process. This is not to be decided tonight, far from it. And as you heard, the map for the new districts, whatever it looks like, has to go through two readings of council, and there will be another public hearing. But in the interest of transparency, we wanted to do this early, give you the information that we had when it was provided, and start beginning this collaborative process because we're aware of the challenges of redistricting this year because of the explosive growth and just the fragmented nature of the way the city is developing.
Do you know when the next meeting is going to be?
No, sir, not at this time.
As you heard her say, we're one of 30 that's already applied. And then every, there's 270 something cities in the state that have got to go through this before their next election, so.
Oh, yes, sir, yes, sir, it'll all be public, yes, sir.
Ms. Kelly suggested that it may be June or July before they have anything ready in terms of preliminary maps. Got two more.
Yes, ma'am.
Will there be multiple workshops for the citizens of Greer to participate in for this redistricting? Or will that be just a return of one meeting, one workshop?
We, I don't know that we've determined that yet. As we get further along in the process and we have maps to consider, it may require multiple, it may only be that we'll need one. I just don't know at this point in time because we don't know how many alternatives that we'll have to take a look at. All right, anything else?
I just want to thank everybody again for coming out.
Yeah, thank you for your participation this evening. And if you have questions, we're available to help as best we can in that regard. Anything else in regards to the workshop for the redistricting? Hearing none. We stand adjourned from the workshop. Thank you for being with us this evening and allowing us some transition time. It almost got away from me there. We were a little bit late getting started. But we have been in a workshop in regards to the process of redistricting, which we undertake with every census, and that was a good start to that. Lots of information gathered and lots of questions asked, and we will continue to move forward in that regard. Speaking of public hearings, we're going to start our meeting this evening with a public hearing. I'd like to call the public hearing to order. This is a public hearing called for notice of public hearing for the Greenville County Program Year 2022 Annual Action Plan for the City of Greer. And this is the City of Greer's plan. The City of Greer participates in the Greenville County Community Block Grant Development Program and the Home Investment Partnership Program. And they prepare a plan for us each year, and this is time for the overview and the recommitment to that process. And Iman Wabadoo is here to join us this evening from the GCRNA. And we look forward to hearing from her, and the podium is yours, ma'am.
Good evening. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council members. My name is Iman Wabadoo. I am the Program Director for Greenville County Re-Development Authority. I also have a board, the board members is first year, Mr. Alan White, here for support. And to see if I'm doing it properly. So the 2022 Annual Action Plan for Greenville County, but specifically the public hearing for City of Greer, basically explaining the funds that we get from yours, Department of Housing and Urban Development. There are three major funding sources we get from HUD, that is Community Development Block Grant, Home Investment Partnership, and Emergency Solutions Grant. Emergency Solutions Grants will not be mentioned here because it's countywide. That's the only fund that the City of Greenville do not get, so we're able to use this fund over there. But the rest of the funds, CDBG and home, are shared within the county, but not City of Greer. Okay, so for the purpose of this hearing, just a little bit about who we are. We started operation in 1974 for the sole purpose of administering the federal funds from HUD. And there is a cooperative agreement that is renewed every three years between Greenville County, GCRNA, the five municipalities, you being one of them, Fountain Inn, Molding, Simpsonville, Travelers Rest. And in doing that, we go through this cooperative agreements, knowing that City of Greer has a split community. You have some sections like in Sunnyside that is in the county of Spartanburg. But because it's within your city limits, it's part of this funding. Same goes for City of Fountain Inn because they have a section, the Sanctified Hill neighborhood, which is in Lawrence County, but it's part of this. So that's, both cities have split communities. So you participate in this funding that we have. An administrator of the funds, we are obligated to do an annual action process. We do a five-year plan. I believe two years ago, we came here, actually, three years ago, we came. Well, we're in the process of doing the next five-year plan, which is 2020 to 2024. So and now our board members are appointed by Greenville County, a 12-member board. So in doing the five-year plan, we got to think about what we have to do. Each year, we propose action plans that meet that five-year goal. And at the time we did that, we did several needs assessment meetings. We did one here in Greer, had a public hearing, had the neighborhoods come together. And they tell us all the different needs from basically housing, economic development, neighborhood revitalization, infrastructure, community development, homelessness. So we had all those five-year goals. We actually have housing goals for the county and then housing goals for the municipalities. So everything we do each year meets towards that five-year goal. And in doing an annual action plan, we're saying, this is what you have. This is what we said you're going to do. How do you want to do it? Basically addressing housing, community development, and all that. For this 2022 starts July 1, 2022, and ends June 30 of 2023. So six months of each calendar year. We're currently in the fiscal year 2021. And this is the third year of that five-year plan. So we're slowly inching into that five-year to see. We all, each year we assess our goals, we have, we've done, what have we, how do we meet each goals? What's the problems? What's going on? How do we tweak some programs to meet those goals? I'll talk about a community development block grant, things that you can do. There's this funding that basically can take care of a lot of things. As long as the people you serve must be low or moderate income families. It's also used to address slum and blight or urgent need, COVID being one of them. Before we got the COVID funds, we actually started using the CDBG funds to address some of those needs. People needing rental assistance and things like that. And like I said, it prevents slum and blight demo. If you have a sturdy of a neighborhood that you need to revitalize, that's the perfect use. It does a lot of things from rehab to unoccupied repair program. We have those programs. Economic development, business loan, facade improvement, infrastructure improvement. But you have to make sure that the right beneficiary is a lower moderate income. So there are two ways. If you have a low or moderate income area, or what we call qualifying census tract, we don't have any in Greenville County. Which is a good thing. It means that we're doing a lot. But at the same time, too, we also know while you look in, you'll still see that there's a need. So we intend to do specific survey to capture the income of the area, the people that we want to serve, what we call the beneficiaries, and ensure that 51% of those that will benefit from that infrastructure improvement or facility improvement are low or moderate income. For facility improvements, if that center or community center is in the low or moderate income neighborhood, if we had any, it wouldn't matter because it's in the neighborhood that's low-mad area. But if you have a center specifically for seniors, seniors that are termina, that's what we call, let me take clientele, it's presumed. So you could do a lot beyond ADA. If it's in a community center that is much more affluent area, but you feel like, yes, you're going to have low-mad. The only thing we can do there is any ADA activities in bathrooms to make sure, you know, walkways. Over in the park, we did that park with the kids planet to make sure families with severely handicapped are able to bring their children to play there. So we'll address any ADA issue there. Talking about the home funding, basically anything home, it's the supplies, the production. This is the accessibility of affordable housing. You can use it to rehab, you can use it to do new construction. So we do a lot of those, and I will talk about some of the programs that we have. And the way we expand the program, so we have to be able to meet the needs of the community. We can't build it all, so we actually expand up projects to partners that provide affordable housing. ADA payment assistance and things like that, but we'll get to that. This is basically snapshots of the three-year funding. Got a little bit more. We don't have the final numbers yet. However, what we did was use the 2020 census information and replugged the numbers based on if we're getting the same allocation as we did in 2021, using your total population, using your low-mad numbers, using the number of people poverty, using your per capita income, your CDBG money allocation came up higher than the other two years. The program income basically is existing money that we've had, and we reinvested it, either provided rental housing, provided rehab, interest loans paid back. When they come back to you, if we use CDBG, comes back as CDBG program income. If we use home, comes back to you as home. So you've been building program income, particularly when we've been building the Creekside. It's a little lower than the others because we're in the final phase, so we're not projecting. The program income is what we project for the next year. For the Creekside, we are actually winding down. We've almost finished the unit, so we're not projecting more. But you have existing, and it's something that we're constantly using your project, your funding. So this is the city, the home funding, it's 129, 879, and program income is $43,000. So estimated proposed number, if we're given the same allocation with our reduction, anticipate like 526,665. So your grant numbers are higher than the others. Program income is just not doing, is not as high as other times. But that's not to say we haven't been doing work there. It's just that the things we're doing is coming to the end. And before, we're kind of closing out Creekside and getting ready for Fayetteville.
So clarification, that's a $250,000 drop. I'd like a little bit more information. You're saying that's because the work that we have done in the prior couple of years was off of projects that were ongoing. But what we've been doing for the last several years has been invested in infrastructure and other things that didn't give us the program income that we've had in the past. Is that a reasonable assumption?
It's one of it. However, the major drop here is Creekside developments. We've been doing most of the things we have right now, CDB, infrastructure, right? But one of the things for the home part, the one of the things for the home program income was the housing developments that we've been selling in Creekside.
Of Creekside?
Yes, so we're almost done building, selling. The program income we projected for 293, 2023, the projects are on ground right now. So that was because we knew we're going to sell. We actually have sales, some of them have closed. But for Creekside in 2022, we've got four lots left that are very challenging, and we're working in different ways, so we're not anticipating the program income. But when we start by this time next year, when we start planning for 2023, we'll be getting ready to build the Fayetteville housing units. So we'll start projecting program income for home.
And that, Creekside is how many units?
Total would be, we had 36 of seniors built by United Housing Connections and 36 homeownership units. So we've got four lots left, so we're about 29, so just a little bit less, right? But we're almost there, like 32.
Does the program income come from the lot sales or from, you're actually selling the units and making money off those?
Yes, the units, yes. And actually, what we sell is what we put back minus whatever if we have to pay legal fees and everything. Then the rest becomes program income that will record and receipt on your behalf.
So it's not necessarily income, it's just putting it back? I guess that?
It is income. It's program because it's funding, so it's, we'll call it as program.
But not like a profit type income?
It's not if we don't, yes, no, because it's always back in the system for projects, right? So this is basically a pie chart of the percentages of the proposed users. And you can see that. You can see that what we are planning to do, all your funding for home, we're going to be using it to do with storing aids, getting ready to begin to build Fairview project. Put some funding in about $50,000 out there for demolition. Always subject to change. You also have some balance that you carry forward. So you do have money there. Your sub recipients, we've always for the past maybe four, five years have kept, we actually increased from $41,000 to 60 about a few years ago because you do get the most requests from your, your partners. Infrastructure projects, the funding we have, we're projected into beginning to help us with Fairview project as well. Facade improvement, helping businesses up to $5,000 per business front that you, we fix. Economic development, $50,000. And I will show you some projects that we've done a lot. But this year, there's been about four business loans that we've, we've given out. We set some funding off there for rental activities because we do have some rental properties that we have to do some upkeep and maintaining and all that kind of thing. So that way the houses are up to shape, up to standard, sustainable as well. It's a little bit of all the funds that we used from home, CDBG, ESG, Affordable Housing Fund. That's a separate fund that's not from heart, but funding that the county of Greenville gives to Greenville County, gives to us. About a million dollars. They pledged this about three years ago. This will be the third year. They sent out a million dollars that we can use anywhere in the county for affordable housing. So either project that we do or projects that we help with partners. We do a lot of gut financing for partner projects from light tech projects or homeownership units or things like that. So that project has really come a long way. We know that our home funds allocation has been reducing over the years. But Affordable Housing Fund has really come to help us a lot. One of the things we do with the Affordable Housing Fund is to mirror the program, the regulations that we've set out for home program. However, switched it a little bit because the home funds stops at 80% area medium income. But because this is unrestricted, we're actually able to help families or households that make more than 80% from 81 to 120. So that gives a little bit of middle income class families to either have access to affordable housing, affordable rental, or homeownership units. Don't want to read this all. This is basically all the programs that we have. Last two years, we created what we call investor program because we understand that some mom and pop or a small rental property owner may need assistance fixing their rental property. Without passing the cost of any kind of rehab to their potential tenant, we're providing up to $25,000, very low interest loan. We can defer a little bit, a big while. But we want to make sure that you are providing a low and moderate income family a place to live and helping you to keep up with the existing stock of your housing unit. So that's a new program. And that way it's not the regular developer's proposal, but it's a smaller telescope of what, what you're going to do. You bid it out or you fix and you make sure the houses are there. The only thing we require that you have to own the property. I told you about CDBG all from infrastructure, facility demo, small business and all that. We also want to mention that we still have COVID funds. We've got partners. Actually, you actually have one particular partner in Gray Relief that has been an excellent, wonderful partner that have helped us with the COVID funds. And Gray Relief alone has helped since 2000, close to 200 households, which comes to close to 500 persons. We from rental assistance. Now they have mortgage assistance as well. They provide food and things like that. So without them, it's been, it will have been difficult. It's one of the things we do with our partners, helping with the COVID, is we kind of spread it out all over the county. So we've got somebody up in Greer. We also have another agency down in the south Simpsonville Fountain area. We've got another area in Travelers Drive. Oh, everybody's got a right or anywhere they want to go. But if you want to get information on how to get assistance for rental assistance, mortgage assistance, utilities, food, just contact 211 United Way and it will direct you to any of our partners. So just to let you know that we still have that. And then Community Works Carolina helps us with business loans. We offer folks that have been impacted by COVID up to $10,000. And this is, you don't pay that. We just want to make sure you still have your door open at least next one year. We've reviewed the proposals from the sub recipients created. The board just looked at, they actually looked at it today. And we have five sub recipients with your public service of $60,000. Gray Parks and Rex for the summer program, they asked for $7,000 and we, they were recommended for $7,000 as well. Gray Park and Rex Senior Program wants to begin their pickleball by the games, the paddles and things. They requested for $4,000. We recommend giving that $4,000 as well. Creative advancements, the after school program. They requested for, I believe it's $20,000 if it goes all the way down. 24, we give them 19. Gray Community Ministries, Homebound, Mills and Wells, they asked 20, we gave them 20. Gray Relief, I just mentioned they are superstar, but we gave them similar thing that they have here. We, they have a lot of money also with COVID money. So we try to make sure coordination of benefits are happening. So they do have money to serve in addition to this. So we did not give them all their asks for, so we gave 10 because we, they have a lot of COVID funds that are, they're helping with the rental assistance and things like that. We also have one nonprofit developer. They've built one and sold one in Needmore and they are planning to build two instead of one to make it more cost effective. We've reviewed, seen their proposal under oath. Total development cost is about 370, 531 to build two. Their target in at least 51% AMI to no more than 80, sync two homeownership units. They asked for 132, $66,000 will be home funds. That would be gray home funds. And then $66,000 will be the Affordable Housing Fund and that will help. In addition to this, we'll introduce potential home buyers can always get down payment assistance from Community Works Carolina for up to $10,000. So it will further make the houses affordable. Basically, we're still working in Needmore. We haven't left Needmore. One of the things we still need to do with few more income stuff, we're almost closed. We probably need only four more properties to get us 51% of the AMI for that neighborhood. So we're looking to do that and finish that. The goal is to begin, once we have that goal is fiscal year 2022, we will begin engineering survey of that property, this potential. Hopefully there will be no right of way to acquire, but maybe an easement is addressed the stormwater and the roads. So that will be kind of what we have for Needmore in addition to the tennis court. We have the pickleball, but it's in the bid process. We did bid it out. Didn't get anybody to submit bid. We're giving another chance. The bids are supposed to be due actually in next Friday. So hopefully, giving them more time, we'll probably get a response from them. I can mention that quick side, we're almost done with all the houses except for four lots. That the ones we have going on now is still either, we've got some sales contracts in place. And we plan to work with partner like Habitat for Humanities where we can provide them with funding for the either infield, the soil or basement. Because those will require those to make those houses a little bit more affordable. We're planning a tree planting. Really, nothing so wonderful as having increasing tree equity in the neighborhood. Trees upstate were providing us with free trees with the neighborhood, the residents. We missed the planting season for this because it was ended in March. So we are planning for the October planting season. And they will have, the residents will have a choice of what kind of trees they need there and we'll have that. There's samples of the houses that we've built recently and sold in quick side. So again, close to the end of the units, the projects. I did mention that we have four recipients of the business loans and Cut Right Food Court. We've been waiting for them to open up. So good renderings, concepts. So four of those business owners did get business loans from us using your funds. The email pickleball, I can mention, bid due next Friday. Saying to get that done and finished. We've got the concept plans in place. It would just be ready. Once we have a bid, accept the bid, we'll sign, execute a contract with your blessings and we'll move with that project. Sunny side, I was talking a little bit about most of all the projects are done. We have two units on the way actually on the construction. One is homeownership, one is rental. But we also have our Fairview Townhome. This, last year, 2021, we finished all the approvals, zoning, place review district, all that good stuff and all that. Demo the sites. So we are actually turning to working towards acquisition of the site. We have the B process going on for the infrastructure. The beats are due back next Friday as well. So it's been quite challenging for contractors. Some of them actually told us we'll be there, but we may not be ready to start until September. There's too many uncertainties, but at least we get some answers and see what's going on. The goal is, if we get that, we start infrastructure improvement for all of that, everything horizontal and some lighting and all that. But we'll start the vertical builds a year from now. Hope to build it in two phases so that we can finish those. It's a kind of the concept. We have three different elevations, but pretty much a lot of the inside are the same. Some of them have their stairs to the right, some have the stairs to the front, to the, to the right or the left. One car garage and two spaces in front for each person. So technically three spaces. A 1,400 square foot plus. We'll talk about the income that we're targeted for that. We did say we're going to do 51% to 100. So when we say 100, I'm not going to use this because that section of that site is in Spartanburg. So we will be using this income for Fairview project. The Spartanburg area medium income unless HUD changes, usually changes the area medium income sometime in April. If it doesn't, we're going to be sticking with this. So when we say 100%, that's looking for families for household of four, 68,000. And he goes, you qualify from, we're looking to target 51, 50% AMI. So you're looking at a below to 80% AMI. We want at least no more than 51% of the units to be 80% AMI. So probably be close to 70% as we work the numbers. We want more families 51 to 80. And a few of, since we're going to add some affordable housing on unrestricted funding or bank funding, some may be up to 100, like we said, 100% AMI, that would be our cut of. Just a little information, what, what I usually share as out of reach and just to let people understand what it is to be affordability that the houses can be. So when you have family who is an SS1, the max is maybe barely $800. They cannot pay more than 30% of their gross, which is 234. It is almost impossible. It's really impossible to get house apartments, one bedroom. And you can see those two columns, rows, the 2020 and 2021, those are numbers from hard fair market rent. That is zero bedroom, which is the studio is 628. But when you look at, even when you look at your 2020 census and see your median rent more than that. So folks in SS1 is out. Folks have been making $10 with their income. Still difficult. You can't find a house of 520 without subsidy. And that's why do we support light tech projects because they have a cap of 60% AMI and below. And now with the state housing has actually pushed for projects to have 30% AMI to help increase their points. So those project helpers to meet most of all our goals and a lot of them. Today, we funded a lot of projects, most two light tech project. One is 116 units and one is 88 units. They both are targeting families 30% below and then to 60%. So, so maybe the last thing is for a minimum wage worker who is make work, making $7.25 in order to be able to even get a one bedroom. That's just at 826. That person will be working close to 88 hours per week to be able to afford that. So you're basically not even sleeping in your house. And most of that, that's a single person. What if they are family? If they're family of four and they're making that. A family of four HUD expects it to be two heartbeats per room. So they're not going to be looking for one bedroom. They're going to be looking for two or three. So can they afford that 942? So that's why A income is good for that minimum wage to increase. And then provide more affordable housing. And when we talk about those, those numbers for the AMIs, when you check down to the hourly rate, talking about your teachers, you're talking about your police officer, you're talking about public service workers. This is the presentation for this year. One thing I need to add is in the past, we've always had our CDBG planning admin at 18%. The max HUD requires it to have is 20%. So with all the changes, we're changing every municipalities, allocating all the funds based on the 20% of the CDBG funding at home. And so with the 20%, the funding allocation that I showed you L is what you're still getting. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel, the floor is open for questions or comments. I'm assuming you did a pretty good job then.
Thank you.
Well, this is a public hearing. I'll ask if, having called the meeting to order, if there was anyone that would like to speak in regards to the public hearing. This is a notice of public hearing for the Greenville County Program Year 2022, our annual action plan for the city of Greer. Anyone to speak in that regard, if you will indicate by raising your hand? I will ask counsel again. Anyone with a question from his I'mma do? Want to do, want me to? I'll ask the second time by show of hand, is there anyone here this evening that would like to make a comment in regards to the notice of public hearing for the Greenville County Program Year 2022 Annual Action Plan for the City of Greer? And a third and final time by show of hand? So noted, no one indicated that they would like to speak in regards to the plan. Counsel has information and will be receiving more from the good folks there. Counsel has information and will be receiving more from the good folks there with the redevelopment authority as we move further into this year. And we thank you for joining us this evening and your board member making the time to come as well. We appreciate the updates and thank you for the working relationship that we have. Counsel, with that, I want to call our meeting to order. We have actually finished meetings earlier than we're starting this one tonight, so bit of a long evening. I appreciate your patience. If you are here for our regular meeting, we were off to a little bit of a late start due to a pre-meeting workshop and then a workshop to open this one. Having called the meeting to order, this meeting is called and convened this evening, March eighth, 2022. Having called the meeting to order, I'd like to ask if you would to stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. That will be followed by an invocation by Councilmember Riley Bettis.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Heavenly Father, this city is truly blessed by your divine grace. We're blessed to have many good people in Greer, and this council humbly and respectfully accepts the charge entrusted to it by the citizens of Greer to conduct the business of this city, to uphold principled, virtuous, and transparent government, and to reject unethical and unwholesome activities. Help us to remember that you, not government, are our provider, and you have armed us with divine guidance, intelligent design, and absolute laws which serve as our guides. Father, please give this city, this state, and this country the courage and strength to prevail over all agents of arrogance, greed, immorality, and evil, that we would be worthy of your continued love and blessings. With glory to God, I pray in Jesus's name, amen. With that, Ms. Duncan, anybody to appear at public forum this evening?
No, sir.
We'll move to the minutes then. You have the minutes of our February twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-two meeting contained there within. I'll entertain a motion to receive.
So move.
And, and the second. Any items of note for the clerk? Hearing none, Ms. Duncan.
Mr. Aaron Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Daner?
Yes. We have a special recognition this evening. Krista Gibson and Heather Scott join us as we recognize Greer Community Ministries Meals on Wheels program tonight.
We want to offer a proclamation to the Greer Community Ministries tonight, and particularly in regard to the Meals on Wheels program. This has been such a tremendous asset to our community, and this is an undertaking that was begun out of group of volunteers and is carried on to this day. With those volunteers, you can serve in that regard in a lot of different ways, whether or not it is driving, riding, or even not working in the kitchen, like I will be doing coming up soon. Is that not yes? Okay. But you will probably involve Mr. Booker being there for that as well soon, document that. So I'd like to offer, if I could, this proclamation that says, whereas Greer Meals on Wheels program is celebrating fifty years of providing meals to the nonbound vulnerable residents, and whereas Meals on Wheels and March for Meals urges every citizen to take time this month to honor the Meals on Wheels program, the seniors we serve and the volunteers care for them. Whereas Greer Community Ministries program reaches an entire community and helps combat senior hunger and isolation in Greer, and whereas Greer Community Ministries Meals on Wheels program benefits three hundred and fifty local residents on a weekly basis, meals are prepared on-site, delivered, and funded completely through community donations. Whereas City Greer is one of the surrounding community, we're strong supporters of the Meals on Wheels mission and the desire to eradicate hunger and isolation among our most vulnerable residents. Now therefore, Mayor Rick Daner and Greer City Council declares the month of March 2022 as the Greer Community Ministry Meals on Wheels March Month. So there is that. And if you would like to address the gathering, you're welcome to do.
We are so appreciative of serving those three hundred and fifty people each weekday. We, it takes volunteers like Ms. Albert, kind of drive twenty-one routes, we go all the way up toward, way past Skyline Elementary, down to Sparkville County, near Ever Creek. So we're appreciative of all the donations that they make that happen.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Great job. With that, we will move to the administrator's report. Mr. Merriman?
Mr. Mayor, thank you. Two real quick things. If you'll notice, the conference room two hundred is without walls. We began construction on that to relocate, use that space for office space for our event staff. We look to have that project completed within the next two weeks. So there will be some temporary changes to the way y'all get your mail, but Tammy will be working that out and make sure you get all the information that you need. And the last thing is just a reminder that your statement of economic interest is due on the thirtieth of this month. I will remind you again at the next meeting, but after that, kind of on your own. So with that being said, that's all I have, Mr. Mayor, unless there's any questions for me specifically.
As always, the administrator will be glad to help you with questions as well as department heads. Let's move to items.
Mr. Mayor, I have one question. It's just a follow-up. I'd ask about the inflation on food and if we had factored, if we've gone back and tried to extrapolate that with where we are on our hospitality dollars.
I know that I've had a conversation with our CFO, Mr. Seifert. He is working on that, and it does present some challenges in pulling that information out, but he's going to give it the old college try and hopefully the next update we'll have at the next council meeting, your financial update, we should have an answer for you there.
Thank you.
With that, and let's move on to old business. We have one item of old business this evening, the second and final reading of ordinance number six dash twenty-two. This is an ordinance to provide for the annexation of property owned by Gabriel Watts and Alan Watts located at two ninety-five Genovale Road by one hundred percent petition and to establish its zoning classification of I one for said property. Ms. Cotty, any new or additional information in regards to the final reading, second and final reading of ordinance number six dash twenty-two?
Thank you, Mayor. Planning Commission did hold a public hearing on February twenty-first and recommend approval of the zoning of this project. That's the only update that I have.
Counsel, I'll entertain a motion to receive with a nod from staff.
So.
Second. Have a motion, second floor is open for discussion. Questions? Comments? Hearing none, Ms. Duncan.
Mr. Aaron Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Daner?
Yes. Counsel, let's move to items, let's move to items of new business, the first of which is a bid summary for the Highway twenty-nine and Interstate eighty-five, as well as Highway fourteen median landscape maintenance work. Travis, Mr. Durham joins us this evening to give us an overview of the bids.
Good evening, Mayor and Counsel. Public Service Department solicited bids for the Highway twenty-nine, and there's actually a typo here as a matter of record. It's actually Interstate eighty-five and SC one oh one median maintenance, not eighty-five and fourteen. That was correction that I didn't catch on my end, but the solicitation resulted in three contractors submitting bids. Palmetto Landscape and Lawn Care was actually the middle-of-the-road bidder for that project. It is my recommendation that we award Palmetto Landscaping, Landscape, and Lawn Care this contract. They are not the lowest bidder, but myself and Steve Grant, as he was part of this initial solicitation, they, they're not the lowest, but they seem to have the experience and personnel to fulfill the obligations of the contract. Our current contract amount is fifty-eight thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars. That is split between A and H Lawn Care and Roebuck Wholesale Nursery and Landscaping. While we are increasing that dollar amount, I will make that change and that consideration in my budget proposal for fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Counsel, for the purpose of discussion, I'll entertain a motion to accept the recommendation of the department in regards to the bid summary. You'll hear a motion to receive.
So.
And a second. Floor is open for discussion.
What is the maintenance? I'm glad that's not Highway fourteen, because I couldn't see us maintaining Spartanburg sign down there, so.
Yeah, that was, that was definitely a typo on my end there, so.
What is the maintenance involved at eighty-five and one oh one? I don't go that way very often on eighty-five.
Yeah, there's some, some lawn maintenance in the way of grass cutting. There's some irrigation out there, and I believe some plant material to take care of, but it's actually broken up into those four quadrants around the interchange bridges there, so that's what that would be. And then the twenty-nine is, you know, the medians from one end on twenty-nine to the other, so.
So this is, they will maintain it as needed, or what?
There is a schedule, I'm going to pull this up and I can, there's actually nineteen scheduled mowings, there's a fertilization plan, yearly mulching, some shrub care, shrub pruning, tree pruning, things of that nature, that are, were in the specification for the scope of work that went out with this bid, so.
What is the, did anybody follow up with the place Woodruff Lawn Care as to why their bid was so low?
Yeah, so Mr. Steve Grant sent out kind of a questionnaire to all three companies. We were only, we only received response from Palmetto and Roebuck as to questions, you know, if we were including mulching in the bid, if, if they had arborists on staff, or if they had irrigation operation and repair training, and how many staff members they had, list of similar contracts that they have, we did, we never received a reply from them, so.
Others? Comment? Questions? Hearing none, Ms. Duncan.
Mr. Aaron Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Daner?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. First reading of ordinance number two dash twenty-two. This is an ordinance to provide for the annexation of a portion of property owned by Kathy P. Smith and James Allen Smith III, located at eight twelve Harvey Road by one hundred percent petition and to establish a zoning classification of DRD for said property. Ms. Cotty, information in that regard, please?
Sure, thank you. This is a portion of a parcel located at eight twelve Harvey Road, currently in the county unzoned, and they are requesting to annex and zone to DRD for a townhome community for up to seventy-nine units. This is an aerial view of the property. This is the current zoning map. It is adjacent to PD Plan Development across the street from I one Industrial. This is the future land use map. Across the street, the blue that you see is mixed employment, but the peach that you see is suburban neighborhood, and that would be the designation that staff would recommend with this zoning as well. This is a current street view of the site. It is the area to the left, past the single-family home. And then here is a site plan layout of the site. Again, it's up to seventy-nine units. And then per the statement of intent, the townhomes will have a minimum of fifteen hundred square feet. The density does come out to six point two six units per acre. They have reserved approximately three point four acres of open space for both passive and active. They did show a buffer that's installed along the property lines that are adjacent to other residential development. That's something that council has asked for in the past, so staff asked that to be incorporated in the plan, and it is shown. Typical with a DRD, it does have twenty-five-foot perimeter setbacks, twenty feet along interior roads, and then thirty feet along Harvey Road, and that also includes a roadside buffer. For building materials, they will consist of hardy board, brick, and/or stone, and have to have a minimum of two of the materials, a combination, and then the exterior colors will be arranged earth tones. And the infrastructure is pretty typical with stormwater and open space maintained by an HOA. They will be required to put in exterior sidewalks. And they did hire a transportation engineer to conduct a transportation impact analysis that was reviewed by a third-party engineer, and no improvements are required at this time. That does not negate potential for right-of-way dedication and/or road widening along Harvey Road, and that will be decided during civil. That's all the information that I have, but I'm happy to answer any questions, and the applicant does have representation as well.
By show of hand, is the owner of the property or representative of the owner of the property with us this evening? Okay, thank you. For the purpose of discussion, I'll entertain a motion to receive.
So.
And a second.
Second.
Floor is open for discussion and questions.
There's a, that pointed area at the top, what's the deal with that?
So they're, they're not, they're, they're purchasing this property. It's my understanding that they wanted to retain some of the property, but the owner representative may be able to speak to that better, but they are asking for only a portion of the property.
So it's being annexed?
So only the portion, so the, the white part will not be included in the annexation. They'll have to record a subdivision plat prior to second reading if this were to move forward.
I don't think you could build on those, there's a lot of slope in the backside of that property. I think that's, that might be what those tight lines are, it's just the elevation changes.
Would you all like to address that situation, please? If you'll identify yourself by name and either a company name or address, please.
Sir, sir. Thank you, Mayor and Counsel. My name is Colton Miller. I'm at two one three Heartland Place in Simpsonville, and I'm representing the seller and Zenith Real Estate, who is the applicant in this situation. Now, the Smith family wished to retain a portion of the property, as, as you noted, and that is the, the white portion at the top of the screen here, that is not included in the annexation request. They still would like to live on the premises, and that is where the location of their house is, so they would like to stay there. The councilmember Dumas is correct that this back area here, there is tight topography. That area is going to be entirely undisturbed, save for the nature trail, which we have access through. It's difficult to see on this screen, I'd be, it, it is in there, I'm sure your packet, throughout that wooded area, but the portion that they are retaining is for the purpose of continued residence on-site.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
So, excuse me, you'd like to do a new survey before we can approve of this, right?
So they would have to record the subdivision prior to second reading. That's pretty typical when we have annexations or rezonings that are for portions of sites. We require them to record it before we bring it to you for second reading. You'll see, I think, two or three others tonight that will have that same. So staff keeps note and makes sure that we have the deed book page to show that it's been recorded before we go ahead and, and take it in.
And the existing home is coming into the city, or is that in that section that's outside?
No, sir, that is in the section that it will not. No, sir. That is in the section that it will not be annexed or zoned. So it's only the portion below that white area.
How are they going to get to the property? Are they going to drive through the subdivision to get there?
I believe it does have access up on. Yeah, it's hard to see from this view. Let me, let me go back over this way. Yeah, so. Yeah, so it loops back up and they do have a small piece. Their driveway actually currently goes through the PD, the Plan Development, but they do have enough room for a potential encroachment onto Harvey Road. They have consulted with Robert Rue, who would issue that encroachment permit, but currently their driveway does go through another property. And to our knowledge, they don't have a recorded access agreement, but again, if that were ever to be taken away, they do have enough room to have a driveway installed.
I may have missed this. Are these garage front, are these parking lots?
So they are. Yeah, this is a little difficult to tell, but there is a twenty-foot setback off the road, so they will be, they will have ample parking space. I don't believe the statement of intent said whether they would have a garage or not. So at this point, we. Yeah, so it's not in the statement of intent. So they are not required to have a garage. However, most builders do end up.
And now, just looking at the layout for the stormwater detention, I'm just, is that going to be anything special there? Or is it just going to be whole, dry? Aesthetically, I'm just curious how that's going to look with all them houses around.
Right now, we're planning on that being dry.
Other questions?
Because of the way this little portion is cut out right here, and it's hard to, tell me where Harvey Road is on this. Is that on the, that's on the right, bottom right side, correct?
Sorry. Okay.
So Harvey Road is down here, so between the blue and the green.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
This is Harvey Road here that circles back around.
And then in this picture here, where is the piece that's not going to be in the city? But not the, not the strip that goes into the parcel next, to the left of it?
No, so that, that portion is, that portion is included in the development. That's just in the undisturbed portion of the property.
Okay, so that piece is still being annexed, is that correct?
That's correct, yes, sir.
This is your, this is your open space portion of the DRD here.
Okay. And I'm sorry, the residents, the existing residents, that's on the top right side? Is that what we're, okay. I was confused. Okay, I thought that they were living like right in the middle of this, and so I get, I see, I understand now.
Quite right.
Makes a lot more sense. Gotcha. Thank you.
Others? Comments? Questions? Hearing none. Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Arrowood?
Yes.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert? Mayor Daner?
Yes.
Counsel, let's move to the first reading of ordinance number three dash twenty-twenty-two. This is an ordinance authorizing the execution and delivery of a development agreement by and between the City of Greer, South Carolina, and Harvey Development LLC with respect to infrastructure improvements in the City of Greer and other matters related thereto. Ms. Cotty?
So this is just the typical annexation development agreement that accompanies annexations. The site plan that you see on the screen is what accompanies it as an exhibit, so it will be based on seventy-nine lots as of now. And I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
For the purpose of discussion, I'll entertain a motion to receive. End of second.
Second.
Floor is open for discussion. Questions? Comments? Hearing none. Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Arrowood?
Yes.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert? Mayor Daner?
Yes.
Counsel, let's move to the fourth item, the first reading of ordinance number eleven dash twenty-twenty-two. This is an ordinance to provide for the annexation of properties owned by Deborah Crell Trust located on Mayfield Road by one hundred percent petition and to establish a zoning classification of R-ten for said property. Ms. Cotty?
Sure. This is a request for two different properties that are adjacent to each other along Mayfield Road. You can see on the aerial the outlined property as well as the adjacent parcel with the red star. It is adjacent to Manor at Abner Creek, and then it, in the bottom corner, you'll see Mayfield Crossing subdivision as well. For the current zoning map, these peach colors are R-12 Single Family Residential. And then the future land use map is for suburban neighborhood. That is also the designation that this property would receive if it is annexed and zoned into the city. And then this is a current street view of the proposed project. So that's all the information that I have, but I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have. And I believe a representative is here as well.
By show of hand, is the owner of the property or representative of the owner of the property with us this evening? So noted. Thank you. Counsel, motion? Second. Second. Floor is open for discussion.
On the map, there's, I think y'all aligns, is that right?
Those are ten-foot strips that were previously utilized to annex portions into the city. And they may follow, it's likely that they follow easements.
The only question I got, and I probably already know the answer to this, is between the different subdivisions, is there going to be any interconnectivity planned or just asking?
At this time, this is just for zoning. So there, I mean, we do have a proposed layout that's accompanying the development agreement that you'll see with the next site. But I don't believe there's any proposed connectivity. They will be required to put exterior sidewalks along Mayfield Road.
Questions?
What's the purpose? Well, it doesn't matter on the right two-thirds, but on the upper side where the property line is being drawn with the sewer encroachment. The, the white line, that, was that, is that a property boundary? Middle, top third?
So the light blue, I believe, is just another sewer easement. The property line follows the red outline.
Why is it?
It's a creek.
The creek? Okay. So you've got a creek and a sewer easement running through this development? But now, the, the white, the creek is not in what's being annexed, correct?
To a small piece of it.
Okay. Where is that Abner Creek?
That's what it says on the server.
Questions? Comments? Discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Arrowood?
Yes.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert? Mayor Daner?
Yes.
Counsel, we'll move to the first reading of ordinance number twelve dash twenty-twenty. This is twenty-twenty-two, excuse me, an ordinance authorizing the execution and delivery of a development agreement by and between the City of Greer, South Carolina, and RP and L LLC with respect to infrastructure improvements in the City of Greer and other matters related thereto. Entertain a motion to receive. End of second.
Second.
Any newer information in regard to that? Ms. Cotty?
No, sir. This is, again, our typical annexation agreement.
Questions? Comments or discussion in that regard? Hearing none. Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Arrowood?
Yes.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert? Mayor Daner?
Yes.
Counsel, let's move on then to first reading of ordinance number thirteen dash twenty-twenty-two. This is an ordinance to provide for the annexation of property owned by Column GSP zero eight one LP located at twelve ninety-six Woodschapel Road by one hundred percent petition to establish a zoning classification of I-1 for said property. Ms. Cotty?
Sure. This is for one parcel, again, a little under fifteen acres. That's located at the corner of Woodschapel Road and Victor Hill Road. This is the current aerial of the site. This is a current zoning map. Again, that bold blue color that you see is I-1 Industrial District. The future land use map, the light blue color is mixed employment, and this is also what designation this property would receive if it were to be annexed into the city. And then this is a current street view from Victor Hill Road. So this would be kind of the frontage on the right, and then this is a street view from Woodschapel Road. Again, the property is on the right. It's the only information I have, but I'm happy to answer any questions. And Mr. Deaton is here as a representative for the property owner, if you have any questions.
Let's formalize that. Mr. Deaton, by show of hand, is anyone, is an owner of the property or representative of the owner of the property with us this evening? Record will indicate so. With that, I'll entertain a motion to receive. End of second. Floor is open for discussion. Questions? Comments? Hearing none. Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Arrowood?
Yes.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert? Mayor Daner?
Yes.
Counsel, let's move to the last item before us this evening, the first reading of ordinance number fourteen dash twenty-twenty-two. This is an ordinance to change the zoning classification of a property and portions of other properties owned by two ninety-six at Kiss Road LLC located on Highway one oh one Kiss Road and Highway two ninety-six from C-three, which is Highway Commercial District to RM-two Multifamily. Ms. Cotty?
Sure. This is one full parcel and then several portions of other parcels that will be recombined. Again, this is one of those that we would require a new recombination survey to be recorded prior to second reading if this were to move forward through Council and Planning Commission. Again, the outline is a little bit hard to see because we had to kind of draw it on GIS, but Ms. Wilkes was nice enough to provide us with an exhibit. These represent the different kind of portions of all the properties that are involved. Everything that you see in a green pattern will be part of the site, and then the other colors would remain C-three or Highway Commercial. Again, they are requesting RM-two Residential Multifamily with the intent to develop an apartment complex. This is the current zoning map. Again, this whole area is C-three or Highway Commercial. And then the future land use map, it is traditional neighborhood, but the overlying zoning is the green dot that you see at the intersection. That is a neighborhood center, and it would go out a quarter or half mile around it, and so it does fall within that neighborhood center. So the higher density residential is kind of an appropriate use within that neighborhood center. Planning Commission did hold a public hearing on February twenty-first and recommend approval. I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have. And again, the applicant does have representation here as well.
By show of hand, is the owner of the property or representative of the owner of the property with us this evening? I would assume that you are the magician that put that piece of property together then.
I like the color four, they do math.
With a request for approval from staff, I'll entertain a motion to receive.
So moved.
End of second. Floor is open for discussion.
Inside. Does that match up on our, on our map here?
It, it might not be perfect. I'll be honest, we had to draw it by hand. So the one Ms. Wilkes gave us is the, the best one.
I think this doesn't show any of it on this inside, does it? This has got Subur, South Subur, Brushy Creek, Buckham Road, South Highway fourteen.
Which, I'm sorry, which, what, which page or which are you looking at on the?
Looking at the map page on our, what we get, the information we get.
Okay. Is the exhibit wrong?
Sorry. Yeah, little exhibit on the bottom. It's just, that's all he's talking about.
Oh, okay.
It's impossible to tell where this is if you didn't know from the inset.
I apologize. So this is between Reedville Road, Highway one oh one and two ninety-six, which two ninety-six is Reedville, so Kissed, two ninety-six and one oh one.
For all intents and purposes, this is the, I guess, furthest, furthermost piece of property that's in the city to our east and south, is that correct?
That is correct, currently.
Y'all want to get, it's probably relevant at this point in time. I know we've worked together in this area here for, for quite some time. Maybe a quick history or overview of that property down there and y'all's involvement with that, just to, to bring us up to speed because, again, that represents a significant intersection down there, and I know it's been a long time coming, and we'd be happy to see this starting to begin to develop down there. But I know you've been nursing this project along for quite some time.
We have indeed. I'm Mike McNicholas. I'm with Carolina Holdings. My address is twenty-two Warner Street, Greenville. Yes, Mayor, we, the history on this is that we bought it some twenty years ago, and we, we own, this would be the southwest corner, and then we own twenty acres on the northwest corner. This was an unsued area, and back when Jerry Balding was, was with CPW, we collaborated with the City of Greer and CPW to pull together several hundred acres of homeowners to do a joint venture, so to speak, a collaboration whereby we put money in, each and every one of us, and the city matched up money to build a pump station and get sewer out to this area in anticipation of what we knew to be a significant amount of growth. This, this was about the time or a little before when DOT got out here and took this from a two-lane road to a five-lane road, realigned it and put the traffic light in. All, as part of all of that, we brought both properties in, the northwest corner and the southwest corner, and asked at that time for highway commercial zoning. It was always established as a commercial node, a high-intensity node, and then, of course, you later did your land use plan as Ashley indicated, and it now calls for commercial, high-density multifamily and retail. And that's what we're planning here.
Thank you, sir.
Actually, if you ever, you know, I think Council will find that helpful.